...two thousand and sixteen meeting of the Franklin County Commission, roll call.
Commissioner Waymeyer?
Present.
Commissioner Renaud?
Present.
Chair Howard?
Present.
Commissioner Harris?
Present.
Commissioner Dunn?
Present.
If you'd stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance, and please remain standing for the invocation that will be led by Pastor Scott Dickinson.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We get to wake up on the south end of the county every day and see the beauty of who we are, and this week, of course, spring break, so I want to pray this morning for all the kids out there and all the things they're doing, but a quote that I came across that I like, and I feel like as a county, we're heading that way, "Life is like riding a bicycle, either you keep moving ahead or you fall down," and I appreciate that our county's moving, moving ahead, so let's pray. Lord, I thank you today for the beauty of what's happening in our county right now, both in the farm and agricultural area, I mean, I live in the middle of a Y, a U, that's wheat, that winter wheat, and it's greening up, and it's so beautiful, and our county is, is growing as well, and I, I'm just so glad to be a part of that. And Lord, we want to pray this week for spring break, kids have been doing a lot of stuff, and our county Children's Coalition does so much to help them, I pray for them, that they just be safe as they do the things they do this week, watch over them, be with the teachers as they get a little break this week, and help them. What I pray for these ladies and gentlemen is they do their business, and Lord, that we do continue to go forward, and I pray them not just this day, and the days I get to pray, but every day, because our county is a special place, and so, Lord, watch over them as they do their business today, as they look into the future, and as they look into the things that have to be taken care of, be with each one of them, be with our citizens of our county, and watch over us, protect us, and just give us a great spring as we look to grow and grow and grow. We pray these things in Christ's name, amen.
Do you have any public comments?
Nope.
Takes us to correspondence and organizational business?
Commissioners, I do have one, I think we have a new face around in our office, so Gayle, if you'd like to come up and introduce Kathy.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Morning.
I know that at the department head luncheon we had the other day, some of you were not available to meet our newest members, so I would like to introduce you to Cassandra Harmon, she's joined us, and she's going to be filling our HR part-time position, and we're very excited to have her on board, and I believe she's excited to be here, so...
Have you fully explained to her all the ins and outs?
Well, no.
Didn't scare her away, huh?
I haven't scared her away yet, is my response, but please do stop by if you have an opportunity and get to know her.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Takes us to the consent agenda, items on the consent agenda today that need approving are the minutes from the March ninth, two thousand and sixteen meeting, and claim vouchers in the amount of five hundred and sixty-seven thousand, three hundred and six dollars and thirteen cents, have a spatial voucher today for twenty-eight thousand, four hundred and eighty-two dollars and eighty-seven cents, and also a minus eight hundred and thirty-one dollars and fifty-eight cents tax change order. Have a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Have a motion, is there a second?
Motion's second, Janet.
Commissioner Waymeyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Renaud?
Yes.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Chair Howard?
Yes.
Takes us to our first item of business, it'll be consider approving a proposal from High Plains to repair the culvert just south of Thomas Road on Texas Road in the amount of eleven thousand, six hundred and eighty-five dollars.
Good morning, Commissioners. Culvert on Texas Road suffered a failure near the east headwall, staff and High Plains representatives met on site, discussed methods of repair, High Plains proposal in the amount of eleven thousand, six hundred and eighty-five dollars is a result of this meeting, the request is approval of that estimate.
What would a new culvert cost to put in there?
Less, this saves the two headwalls, the one on the east and the one on the west, uses the existing hundred-and-five-inch, half-arch culvert, we're going to use that for the bottom form for what they're going to be doing, the result will be a concrete structure with the old pipe as the bottom form.
Questions? They have any questions on that?
Any question, yeah.
Okay, if no one has any questions, we'll look for a motion to approve the, this item.
That's something we need to do, so I think I'll make a motion to approve this request for changing out this culvert.
Motion is there a second?
I'll second a motion.
Motion's a second, Janet.
Commissioner Renaud?
Yes.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Waymeyer?
Upstate.
Chair Howard?
Yes.
Okay, second item business is consider awarding the two thousand and sixteen dust control to Scottwood Industries in the amount of, assuming this is one dollar, fifteen cents per gallon?
Fifteen hundred.
Fifteen hundred.
Twenty and a half.
Twenty and a half.
Twenty and a half per gallon.
You approved solicitation of bids on February twenty-fourth, bids were open in the office of City Clerk, County Clerk, excuse me, March tenth, Scottwood Industries was the only bid received, the request is a motion awarding dust control to Scottwood Industries.
What would that cost be for the three hundred foot? Do they put one gallon on them?
It's a dollar forty per foot, minimum of three hundred feet.
On this, I have a question before we vote on this, we had some issues last year with this, I know one person was not happy because we have policy stating that the roads will be bladed, start blading them again in September, whatever?
Yes, fifteenth of September, that's part of the agreement they signed when they apply for the program.
Their concern was that their road was, the dust was down, it was still in great shape, and we went in and bladed up their dust control even though it was working, is there a reason we need to do that if the road's in good shape and the dust control's still working after that time?
My concern on that is, is that we're, we're taking a, just a layman, layman's estimate that the road is, is in good shape, and just someone that's not the blade man or the staff that is out there that are seeing hundreds of miles of road, they're taking a homeowners who may or may not have any expertise in that area, we're taking their word for it, that it's their opinion that the road doesn't need graded and that it's good, where our blade operators and the superintendent is saying that it does, that is, that's my concern, is that I understand that they've paid for it and they, they want that, but at the same time, we still have an obligation to make sure that we're maintaining our road so that we don't lose it, so that we don't start getting down into the, the road base, and if that happens, it's potential for good rain or something like that, we could lose the road.
There is a residual benefit even though the road's bladed.
My, I had the same comment from somebody, and I agree totally that the blade people ought to make the decision, but I just wanted to make sure we weren't automatically saying it's September fifteenth, we're blading right down the road, and we don't care about anything, that was my concern, that if we're blading up everything regardless, just because that's easy, then I'm not sure that's the best way to do it.
No, I don't believe that's the case.
Okay.
By the time you get to the middle of September, most of the dust controls have developed surface imperfections, especially at both ends, it's necessary to get the truck holes out of it.
Well, I understand, I just thought if, if it is still working and the road's still in good shape, it would, like Commissioner Renaud said, it's not automatic that they're just going to blade it because it's time to blade it, and we're driving down the road, so we're going to blade it, if it's still in good shape and still working for them, it's not that hard to lift that blade up and go over that section either.
And, and I, and I would agree with you on that, Jim, when do we usually do dust control, it's, it's in June, May or June, isn't it? Are there two applications or one?
This year, there's going to be one.
Okay, this year's going to be one, okay. So with that being the case, we're talking, by that time, we're talking three or four months that this road hasn't been bladed, so, you know, and that is, that is a concern, and, and I know that my road doesn't go that long without being bladed, and it gets a pretty good amount of, of traffic on it.
Why did we go to one instead of the two applications?
It gets it all on quicker, it was requested by the, by Scottwood, it's what they do for their private pay customers, shoot twenty-five hundreds back up, shoot another twenty-five hundreds, go on to the next one.
On the, the pre-wetting?
It'll freeze our staff up for the second two days, leading them around.
Excuse me, on that pre-wetting bid, is that going to be better for the county if they do it, or are you thinking about us putting it?
Depends on how much moisture we continue to get, we may not need pre-wetting at all.
I see.
The last two years, there, there's not been pre-wetting since I've been here, but we still did it.
I got you, okay.
Should it be necessary, we'd have a price.
Any more questions on this? If not, we'll look for a motion to award the dust control to Scottwood Industries. Motion's there a second?
I'll second it.
Motion's a second, Janet.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Waymeyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Renaud?
Yes.
Chair Howard?
Yes.
The next item will be consider awarding the bid for the two thousand and sixteen painted pavement marking project to Midwest Striping Incorporated in the amount of forty thousand, four hundred and thirteen dollars and sixty cents.
Again, you've approved solicitation of bids, March second, bids were open on the tenth in the office of the County Clerk, bid for Midwest Striping was the lowest responsible bid received, the request is motion awarding the strapping project to Midwest Striping.
On this, on this one, I'm only going by one road particularly, and that's Colorado Road down by where I live, and if you drive that from fifty highway to thirty-one highway, there's numerous stretches of that road where the paint is already gone, there's nothing there, there's spots where it's decent, and other spots, it's totally gone, and that was last year, and most of the reason for that is that they've came in and they've put this paint down right over the top of the roads, and there's still a lot of loose rock on the roads, and as they blow off, or the rock blows off, the paint goes right with it. My thought is, either they need to wait longer and make sure this loose rock is off these chip and sealed roads, or they need to sweep it and get it out there before they put the paint down, because we're just, we spent a lot of money to put paint on loose rock, and it blows right off into the ditch, and now we have large strips of road that have no paint. I don't know, I haven't really noticed on the other roads last year, like John Brown, I don't know if that's, it's as bad as Colorado is or not, but, now that was my only concern, is that we either get it swept better, or we wait longer, one of the two.
Last year, because of the interval between when it was chip sealed and when Midwest arrived, there were some of the roads that didn't get swept.
Okay.
Hopefully, with it being done earlier in the year, there'll be more time between, more of an interval, we'll be able to get to them.
Has Vance given us any indication of when we're on their schedule?
No, we'll be executing our, the contract next week, and at that point in time, we can visit with them about when they're going to be here, I know they've gotten the City of Ottawa's work, Princeton awarded them their work, we awarded them our work, they have a fair chunk of work to get accomplished.
It's mostly, the center lines are pretty good, it's not the center lines, it's just the outside, edge lines that disappeared pretty quick, for, you know, my thought was either cut this amount down and not put the outside lines on, or we gotta wait, there's no point in painting loose rock, so, that's all the comment I had on it.
Jim, what was the, I mean, there's a big difference in the two bids, do you have any?
I have no idea who this high bidder was, or the methods they're using, or it's one of the advantages of advertising in the local paper.
If there's no more discussion, we'll look for a motion to approve awarding the bid to Midwest Striping in the amount of forty thousand, four hundred and thirteen dollars and sixty cents.
Make a motion to approve.
Motion is there a second?
Second.
Motion's a second, Janet.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Waymeyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Renaud?
Yes.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Chair Howard?
Yes.
Are you going to do the next one for us?
I'd be happy to.
Oh, I guess you're, I was, I was used to Larry usually doing this, okay, the next item will be consider setting a public hearing to consider vacating Iowa Road from Allen Road to Butler Road.
Board of County Commissioners approve removal of the bridge on Iowa Road south of Butler Road, which has been accomplished, the property owners have access to their property from both Butler and from Allen Road, making Iowa Road unnecessary, the request is a motion setting a public hearing to consider vacating Iowa Road for March thirtieth, from Allen Road to Butler Road.
I drove down yesterday and looked at this road, and then I visited one of the landowners, happened to be down in the area, and I stopped and talked to him for a while, but started out, he was, was not for this idea, but before we were done talking, and he basically said, you know what, maybe we would be better off closing it and gating it, so, he kind of leaned around to going that direction from, his first idea was, his first idea, he wanted me to, to tell you, is that what they really wanted is to see a low-water bridge put in there for them, but...
It's my understanding he's already created one on the west side of the road.
He said he has done a little bit, he has done a little bit, so anyway, that's the only comment I had, and like I said, he, he owns one side of the road on the, I believe, east side, one side of the Iowa Road. Okay, so, any else, anybody else have a question about this?
So, I have the public hearing, and then the public hearing, that will go then to, after we do the public hearing, then we close it, and then we vote on it right after that, and during the meeting.
Right, okay. There'll be a resolution prepared?
This affects, did I get, understand right, three landowners?
Yeah, it's on the map, I believe, here.
I believe it was three, he said. Okay, just have a motion to approve setting a public hearing to vacate Iowa Road.
So moved.
Second.
She's in a second, Janet.
Commissioner Waymeyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Renaud?
Yes.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Chair Howard?
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Last item of business is consider a resolution regarding bonding for road improvement for Kingman Road and Montana Road for the development park, John?
Commissioners, you have before you a, a pair of resolutions, one of which we need to see about passing, as you see in my management summary, I kind of discussed the issues before you and why we need to move forward with one of these, essentially, this is in preparation for the work that needs to be done and the financing of the industrial park development, Montana Road and Kingman Road is what has been agreed upon through the inter-local agreement with the City of Ottawa, as we move forward, we know that we don't have the, the money sitting in the bank to, to be able to do this, if that was the case, we would certainly be using that instead of financing, that would be a cheaper alternative, but since we're going to need to do bonding in order to, to start working on that project, we need to kind of get this taken care of and resolved, the issue is, is that smaller items continue to come up as far as we're moving forward, one of the things that we'll be discussing at the ten-thirty meeting today is the discussion of master planning, and there's some dollars that are used in that, and so, if we continue to, to not have this, basically, we'll, we'll be continuing to use money out of our reserves and not be able to, when we get bonding at some point in the future, to be able to return those dollars back to this, even though it is for this particular project, this helps us alleviate this. Option one is to go move forward with just a resolution by the Board of County Commissioners for Franklin County, authorizing the issuance of general obligation bonds for the county subject to the procedures described herein, in an amount not to exceed eleven million dollars, we don't think that the project is going to run that much, we have estimates ten, nine to ten million dollars, but talking with our bonding council, it's a good thing to have just a little, just in case unforeseen circumstances come up, or issues that come up, and then provide for the financing of the improvement of Kingman and Montana Roads, if we go this route, basically, there are statutory obligations that we need to meet as far as notification, public notice, and then also a public comment period, all of those things take about a ninety-day period of time to, to complete, and so, getting that done, if we move with option one, that will have all of that out of the way, we can start that process and move forward with it, however, we're not issuing the bonds just now, we're getting all of that out of the way so that when the time comes, we can move very quickly and get the issue of, issuance of bonds as soon as we get a vote and approval from you to move forward with that. The second option is, is that we just do a, let me back up on, just one thing on that, by doing option one, if we do have any continued expenses on the industrial park that are related to the development of Kingman and Montana Roads, then we would be able to spend that money out of our reserves and then replace that money with the bonds when we do issue the bonds at that time. Option two is just a, a simple resolution of intent of Franklin County to finance certain improvements with the issue, issuance of federally tax-exempt debt, that's just saying we will be doing, going through this process of issuing bonds at some point in the future, but we're not doing so, we're not authorizing the issuance of that at this particular time, this just allows us to do the simple reimbursement at, at some time in the future, however, even though we pass that resolution, we would still have to come back and pass a resolution authorizing the issuance of bonds, and, and go through the entire process of public notification and public comment, again, that ninety-day period, and looking at this and, and talking with our, our bond council, it is our recommendation that at this time, we move forward with the resolution authorizing the county to issue the bonds, it is our, going through that process now, getting all of that out of the way, so that we can, as far as the public comment period, the public notice, having that taken care of, in the event that there is some public comment on it, or if there is a protest on, on that, will, gives us plenty of time to walk through that, deal with, with those issues, have conversations about those issues, by waiting, it kind of puts us in a precarious position if we're needing to move forward with some things fairly quickly, in the event that we had somebody that was looking to come and, and start a business in the industrial park, or just that the city is ready to move forward with some things, and we're not quite ready to, to hold up some things.
It seems to me, John, that, I mean, really looking at it, option two is, I mean, from, and I'm a simple person, but it seems somewhat superfluous, because in the end, we're going to have to issue bonds one way or the other, so, it, option one looks to me that should be the only option, because you're just forestalling, by going down the road with option two, you're just putting off doing what you need to do in option one, am I, am I seeing something incorrectly here?
No, you're not, and, but, but that is why the recommendation from both myself and bond council is to move with option one, but again, we're not the, the ones that make the decisions, we just give you both options.
I, and I read them through this before we even came here, and, and looking at it, I'm thinking, well, you know, and it's nice to have options, but to me, option, option two is just as superfluous adding on to something that, and putting off, as I've already said, something that we're going to be required, have to, need to do down the road anyway, so, why not just go with the first option out of the chute?
Along with that is that Dottie and Tyler from Kootok Rock is here, that if you have any questions for them, they'd be happy to answer as well.
One more for you, the resolution says not to exceed eleven million, at what point, like, in the timeline, would we decide how much money we are going to bond?
Before, when we, as soon as we get the, the scope of services and the estimates and, and that sort of thing?
Engineers' estimates, or actually send it out to bid?
Right, the engineers' estimates, as soon as we have that, we'll have a better feel for this, and, and at that point, as soon as we're, again, working with them, that they'll let us know when we get ready to, to go out to bids, to get the process done, or if we need to do it before that time, but we'll know exactly what we need based on engineers' estimates and/or bids as soon as, as soon as we, before we move forward with any of it.
And that was my concern, well, not necessarily concern, but putting a dollar amount there, we're, and I hope it wouldn't exceed that amount, but we're limiting ourselves at that, we're reasonably...
And I didn't want to do that, I think eleven million covers it.
So the confidence is high that the scope of the project would be contained within the amount that you've put forth?
Right, and I, and I will say this, is that in discussions later on, and this is discussions to be had between the engineer and the city and the county later on, but this is just for this, this is, because it's very, very clear in our, in our local agreement, these are the two roads that we do, from this, from fifty-nine to the intersection on Kingman, to the intersection of Montana, and from Montana intersection with Kingman, up to the I thirty-five bridge, those are the roads that we've said that we have done, anything above and beyond that is subject to discussion, any other costs relating to the industrial park, that is for you to work out with the city on these things, and so, the bonding here is just for this, any other development and that sort of thing would have to be, or master planning, or, and if there's cost involved with master planning that is directly related to the development of the road, then that needs to be spelled out, and I've shared that sentiment with the engineering firms on that, is that some of these other things, there needs to be a very, very clear articulation of how those costs relate to the project that the county commissioners have agreed upon.
I know there was a possibility that the state would, is looking at the intersection there at fifty-nine, does this include money if, if they don't choose to participate?
It doesn't, because we need to cover, cover our costs and, and those unknowns, there's tiger grants that we're going for, and some other economic development things that we're going to be looking at, now, if those come through and we get those grants, then that will reduce the amount that we actually...
Okay, so then the bond, it is included money to do that, and?
Right, 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 because that's an unknown, we have to take, take what's known right now. We have to take, take what's known right now, so.
When the bonds are issued, are they all going to be issued at once, or would they be issued in increments as they're needed, the process?
I'm not sure on that. I would defer to Dottie or Tyler on that.
Good morning, Commissioners. The bonds will be issued depending on what the recommendation of the financial advisor provides. Your financial advisor is George K. Bond Company. We can do either way. There's no limitation on that. It's really depending on what the market's doing and how the projects progress.
I didn't know that how, what the timeframe's going to be to expend that cost, whether it's within a year, within four years. Why have the bonds? We're not using the money for two more years or whatever, as was.
That's exactly right. And we would look at that at the time that we go to issue the bonds to see what the timing is for the project and what makes sense to me.
Okay.
I don't really have too many comments. I agree with Steve that I think option two, we've been dealing with this for a long time. We know what our responsibilities are on this project and what we're going to need to do. And to me, option two is only dragging our feet at this point. I don't see why we would do that now, but that's just my opinion of this, but.
I don't have that handout in front of me. At what point would engineer estimates be available?
I'm working with that to, with the engineers to get that pretty quickly. So I'm hoping to have that from them probably within the next two to three weeks. And part of that will be the scope of services will include, are they going to handle construction management for us as well as, as well as just the design work? Are they going to do construction management as part of that as well? So.
As far as the state grants, when would, is there a timeframe on when we would know on those?
I'm working with Jim as far as when the tiger grants and other things need to be, to be submitted, so we're working on that as well.
Is there a consensus or we?
I just have one question. On 59 Highway, it looks like somebody's going to have to make turn lanes there. Is that?
And that is part of the, can't remember exactly what that was, but it was corridor study, I believe, through the state. Jim, if you could speak to that.
Yes, that application's already gone forward and already been discussed with people in corridor management, with Wendy and I participating. And it did include turn lanes, a traffic signal when necessary at 59 and Kingman. If you recall, that was submitted last summer.
Is there consensus that option one's what we're, no one's interested in option two?
Yeah. That's, I think there is, and based upon that, I would make the motion that we, as Franklin County Commissioners propose a resolution of the Board of Franklin County Commissioners of Franklin County, Kansas, authorizing the issuance of general obligation bonds of the county subject to the procedures described herein in an amount of not exceeding $11 million to provide for financing of the improvement of Kingman and Montana roads, which that is the verbiage for option one.
Cover that pretty well. What's the resolution number on that, Jim?
1604.
1604. Okay. Hold on a second. The motion is second to approve resolution 1604.
Commissioner Renaud?
Yes.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Waymeyer?
Yes.
Chair Howard?
Yes.
Before you exit the podium, is that, I know we're talking about the intersection there at 59 Highway. Isn't that, okay, the city has put forth to look, and they're contacting folks about the annexation. That would fall within that annexation area, wouldn't?
Potentially.
So if then they, and our bonds are only covering the road specified, doesn't say anything about 59, we have concern about the turning lane, so if that is annexed into the city, then they would wind up, that's their property then.
Yes.
So hopefully, we're thinking about that, though, and coordinating for any grants or anything that we're working, working forward with because we may have to hand the ball off to them or continue to carry it along with them.
The signals at 59 and Kingman, the turn lanes necessary on 59 are part of the $9 million estimate.
Okay.
For Kingman Road.
Okay, okay.
Kingman Road has already been annexed to the city from 59 east a half a mile.
That's what I thought. Very good.
Okay, with that, takes us to staff reports, John.
Thank you guys for being here today. Are you, did you, are you guys coming from Wichita?
Yeah, we're from Kansas City.
Kansas City. Do you ever interact with Alan? Oh, you're from Kootok Rock, right?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, I just, there's an attorney, Alan, who's the guy, one of the head guys down there at Wichita. He and I are pretty good friends, and I was going to say, if you see him, say hi, but you're going the opposite direction.
Just a couple of things. You'll see, you got on your, left on your chairs, the packets for the community partner funding. That is scheduled for the 21st. I got those packets to you early. This allows you to be able to look through those a little bit. I've been working through a management summary, pointing out a few things, talking about the impact that those, that the request, if they were fully funded, would have on our budget. And also, having a little bit of a discussion about the transient gas tax dollars. If you remember, the county fair received an increase for 2016, and so having some of that increase came out of the transient gas tax. And so going back and discussing that and just kind of going through several of the applications and, and like I said, discussing the impact that that would have on the budget. I'll have that for you by next Monday. That will be done. We'll have the discussions next Monday, and then you guys will have a week to make a determination of what you want to do. And then I'll get those back from you a week from this Friday, the following Friday after the 21st, and then that'll be on the agenda for the 30th. So I have the schedule on the memo on that, so if you have any questions or any concerns, just feel free to give me a holler. Second thing is, is that 10:30, we are meeting here to go over some master planning with the engineers and jointly with the city to discuss a few items, so be here for that, and then that will probably just roll right into getting the luncheon, the monthly luncheon with the school board and also the city and the county. And that's all I have at this time.
John, on the outside agencies, is the, maybe I'm just overlooking here, but is not the Chamber of Commerce?
The Chamber of Commerce is just a dues.
So, okay.
A simple dues, just like, that is paid out of the commissioners' budget.
Okay. All right. And have you indicated in the documentation within here of the 10 that you've got listed, which of these would be TGT eligible?
I'll have that broken out for you on the management summary that I provide you on Monday.
Okay, all right.
Trying to make more work for you, but as far as dues and organizations we do belong to, is that something we could, is this kind of a logical place to look, if we could just get, to review it, if we could just, I guess, get a list of?
There, yeah, sure. There's just a couple.
Those are bills that are easy to pay every year, and, you know, unless you stop and think back, and, you know, because priorities and, you know, that make you belong to certain groups change. I mean, I know we, certain, oh, organizations more, I'm thinking more statewide, that maybe we signed up so we could, you know, have a resource, or it's just not that important to us anymore.
Right. And I think listing, listing off just a few, Kansas Association of Counties, Chamber of Commerce, the Ottawa Main Street.
National Association of Counties, the?
National Association of Counties, I believe. Also, the, another one that's just paid, I can't, it escapes me, the one that Don Stottemeyer.
Yeah, that one, yeah.
The Lake Region RC&amp;D, that's just $1,000.
It'd be nice to have those all put together, though. I think, along with what folks think, it's just so we have a listing of them and then what our dues are to those so that we can, we evaluate as needed.
I assume that once we, you know, join organizations like that, they'll probably get paid for continuity, so, I mean.
Sure.
Logical time.
They'll pay dues to Wellsville Chamber to.
I believe so. I can work with Janet, and that'll be fairly easy to track down.
If you don't mind.
So, certainly.
What would happen if other groups want to come in as being partners? Can we add them to the list, or what's the process?
And for, an example of that would be, is that we received a application from Swan Arts Foundation, and so I guess I don't view that as something that's my, that's in my purview to say no or yes to. I put that on, and that's for you guys to decide. But as far as we have in the outline, one of the applications has clearly the outline of, here's the three type of groups that we do, and that is in there, so if they fall under that, and I see that they fall under that, then I'll put them in there. Like I said, I let the board make that determination of what they want to do, so.
Anything else? Derek?
The only thing I have is just to notify you all that I will be at the 10:30 meeting, but I have had a standing obligation at lunch today, so I will not be at the joint luncheon, so.
I attended the pre-construction conference for the bridge over the Meritouzeen River on K-68. That construction project will be starting next Monday, the 21st, and I believe it's 170 working day contract. The new bridge will be built adjacent to the existing bridge, just feet to the south. Traffic will be carried through construction.
Takes us to Commissioner comments and Board reports.
Roy?
Haven't been to any meetings. In fact, our ECAN meeting, which is supposed to be last night, is postponed until a week from last night. The county administrator and I, of course, weren't here last week for this meeting because we were at the State House attending hearings on the tax legislation on Senate Bill 316 and then House Bill 2609. Spent the bulk of the day sitting in there, listening to, listening to those. I would highly encourage, just for your own education, if you haven't already done it, to go out to the KAC site. They have published, printed in print there, all the testimony pro and con, the opponents there, to take a look at that. You know, I think that, hopefully, that they will come to some level of compromise. It's hard to sit there, well, it's easy to sit there and listen to your side talk about it, but then when the opposing side gets a chance and gets questions asked of them, it, I find it somewhat difficult. And if you go and look at the people for the Senate bill that are the proponents of that, which then on the other side, on the House bill, they're the opponents of that because the House is trying to help, help the small municipalities and local governments out, I think, there. But if you look at the people that are the supporters of that bill, and I'm all for business because that brings in taxes, but if you, if you drill down into who the supporters of that are, I would just suggest that you do that. Because they make some statements, too, that are certainly contrary to our feelings. They keep putting forward that we, at the local level, must think that our constituents are, and they, this is their words, that we must think our constituents are stupid because we don't want to allow them to have a vote on, on whether or not their taxes go up, up or not. The thing that couldn't be answered and never was whenever our folks were up speaking to the bill, and we had some folks that were pretty blatant but yet eloquent, is that, which I've sat right here and said to, is that if the state folks had the federal government come knocking on their door saying, you have to have a vote to raise taxes, or we're going to put a tax lid on you, or whatever, that they would be railing against it greatly. Said all that to say this, is that it's undecided at this point. They'll probably meet somewhere in the, in the middle, but I think that we should always, quite frankly, not that I want to be a negative person, but I think we should always prepare for worst-case scenario. And worst-case scenario is that this will go into effect for us this July. And then all those exemptions that exist, if they went away, that we would, they would take, and you, hopefully you understand all those, is that those exemptions include having to raise taxes to pay for bonding and infrastructure, the thing, very things that we're tasked with doing to providing services for our, our community. So I know that we signed a letter and all that kind of stuff, but if there's anything else, John, that you see, or Derek, that you see, that we can do or should do in getting our voices more heard, other than what we've already done, please advise us or advise me. I'm already calling folks and sending personal letters to people that don't even represent our district. Hopefully, it won't fall on deaf ears. But anyway, this, when you get down and look at this legislation, this is, if it passes through as, as written in SB 316, we've already been hamstringing some. This is going to hamstring us at the local government level even more. So that's my testimony. You got anything to add to that, John?
Just the one thing that I would add very quickly is that the community partner funding is, is mostly falls under that.
Yeah.
And that is, if it goes into effect in, for this budget, coming budget year, for to the 2017 budget that we're working on right now, is that the commissioners really need to keep that in mind, is that, because there's some sizable increases that some of the folks have asked for. I think it bears that out on the, on the worksheets. All of that is affected by this legislation, and so we just need to make sure that we have that discussion and that the commissioners keep that in mind when they prepare to give awards, is that any increases there limit other increases in some other areas, may potentially lead to some limiting increases in some other areas. And those go directly to our services and to some issues with employee compensation and other things, so.
Be advised.
Right.
You know, I have a question about that, too, and maybe this isn't the time, but we're looking at the community partners, and I should have thought of this before, is, and again, with the CVB, we're putting a, an amount out, going to be looking to put an amount out there, but one of the things we had talked about for the provider, of who the provider of that services may be in the future, where it may or may not be them, with the issuance of an RFP, I mean, are we going to be going forward to do something with that, or?
Again, I would, I need direction from, from clear, concise consensus direction from the board when we have that discussion.
Oh, at the, when we, okay, all right.
Of what they want, of what they want me to do, whether they want to move forward with this. And that may, that may not be voted on or whatever until the 30th.
Okay. All right. Thanks. That's all I have.
I attended the hospital meeting last night. Of course, not on that board, just kind of a liaison between the county and the, and that board, and so most of what I do is sit there and listen. And I guess what struck me last night is, you know, Matt's, Matt Hein, the CEO, has been here for a little while now, and, you know, take over an organization and automatically make massive changes, but, so it's been interesting to see him get there, get acclimated, put together his team. He did, right away, address some of the surveys. They, they send out surveys and, you know, let you know how you're doing, some of those issues and. Some of those issues and satisfactions gone way up, and he implemented the emergency room doctors, the board-certified emergency medicine doctors. But now, it's, I guess, interesting, as I sit there to kind of see, everything's starting to happen. You know, they figured out a way to pay for the emergency department with addition, without issuing debt. They're pursuing some different designations from the federal government that could definitely help their bottom line and reimbursements. And I guess it's neat to see all that coming together, and the team he's put together has been, been really successful, so. You know, as far as business that was discussed last night, they're going to move the helipad to the northeast corner of the campus over there, and, and some issues they're having, I guess, progress on that parking lot they're going to add there behind the Frank I Center. But, so, I mean, as far as business on the agenda, there wasn't much, but there's definite sense that things are going well. And especially, about the time he came on with Fort Worth Health, some of the implications of that. A lot of other hospitals, especially that size, are really struggling, but this one's not, so, we're lucky. I think we have a very good administrator over there, and bottom line holds well.
And not just the hospital, he's very active in other things in the community, and, you know, with FCDC and other things. He's really, in my opinion, very good for this community.
What I'm saying is, good news, so, yeah.
I went to the CVB meeting yesterday morning. Obviously, without Christie being there as a director, we have a lot on the agenda to do. They hired Susan Rader as the office manager, where that position is. Susan was on board one week that Christie was still there. And so, obviously, with Susan doing what she can and the board jumping in, trying to keep afloat and keep everything going and moving forward, particularly with tourism seasons really starting to boom. I know that the, we looked a lot at the advertising that's going on, some of the bills that are being paid, visitors, center guide that's coming out, getting printed. Those types of items were all on our agenda. Also, the CVB is going to go ahead and advertise for a director, not an interim director, but a director, to see what type of response we get from that advertising. And I thank Nell, who's on our board and works for the Ottawa Herald, looking at the outlets that they can possibly advertise for that director position. And I, I know they will be here to present at that meeting next Monday on their, on their cause. There's also a couple of vacancies on that board we're still trying to fill with people from selected segments of the county, so that we have some cross-input and some people that'll be interested, but also represent different parts of the county and different segments. Monday night, I went to the Lane City Council meeting. Same thing we get at, at most of those small towns, you know, from dogs to trash to road conditions and everything else. But the, they are working on some ordinances with their water, trying to manage meters being shut off, and the fees they're collecting, and like Rantool, there's so many rental properties and making the landowner responsible more than the renter and so forth, just those types of issues. And I'm going to get with you, Jim, on a couple of things about roads they brought up, and we'll talk about that. Then, a week ago Monday, I was at the Rantool City Council meeting, and that, I missed the commission meeting after that one. So, they did hire, or hire, they did put a new person on their city council, replacing a person who'd resigned. And they've talked a little bit about some issues of, they, they're really moving forward with trying to do things like their Easter egg hunt, July fourth stuff, swings in the park. They have some people down there in that city that really have some buy-in and are really trying to make it look presentable, cleanup stuff and whatever. And with the rail trail going through Rantool, and there's some predicted, you know, development areas down that, that, that could be very critical, I think, how Rantool appears and what kind of a hub it becomes. Right now, there's a lot of people leaving their horses there, I guess, when they do their trail rides, and they have signs up that horse is not behind this point because the manure gets into the water system or whatever it is, and people are tying their horses up to the sign where you're not supposed to have your horses up. So, it's an interesting, it's an interesting process going through, watching them down there. But from what the, the CVB says and the Rantool, I really believe that our two rail trails can be a big tie-in for Wellsville, and we look, or for the Ottawa and Franklin County. When you look at the development of the, the industrial park, what else is going to be here? And those rail trails may, may be a lot bigger than what we realize, as they, and there's some development going on in both of those that could really be, I think, crucial to recreation and, well, as tourism and even businesses that, that want to develop here. That's pretty much it.
A question on the CVB. The, you had two resignations, which is why you've got two vacancies. Was there, and was there a reason given those folks, they've been on there, both of them been on there a while, although?
Right. No, I don't think, I think there was, there were some comments that were made, but I would say that they were probably not made a, a public comment, but I'll be glad to talk to you sometime, Steve, about just what my intake is on it.
Very good.
I don't think there was anything that they thought was going wrong or bad or whatever else. Maybe they just thought it was time for them to, to make that decision. But Janine Barrier from Wellsville that we just put on a month or two ago, great lady, will be a, a big asset. Sharon Geis coming on, another lady that very much into it and what's going on, a very knowledgeable person. So, I, I think they're going to be able to find some quality people and just not fill positions with, hey, who's my good friend and that type of thing.
Thanks.
I haven't tenured any meetings since the last commission meeting. One thing I was going to bring up with Steve, talking about going up to Topeka. I don't know if this says where our, our country's priorities are, but I heard this morning that more people will fill out an NCAA bracket this week than have ever voted in the presidential election.
Yeah, I heard that, too.
Kind of tell you where we're at, does it? Okay, if, if nothing else, then I would look for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Have a motion in a second?
Second.
Motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? We are adjourned.